Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Could you please call the roll and we'll start the regular meeting?
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snavely?
Here.
At this time, we will do a pledge of allegiance if anybody would like to join us. This will be a good time.
I pledge allegiance to the five, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to remove item C.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of item C under number four, which I think I've explained to most of you, but neither of the people who are the authors of that report are able to be here tonight. So one had COVID, the other had a travel problem. Anyway, they will be, we will have the same thing at our next meeting when they have said that they will both be there. Okay, is there any other adjustments? Not all those in favor of approving the agenda as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Could I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Right here. All right. Public participation and we will begin with a presentation on Age Friendly Oxford with Jennifer Heston Mullins. Hi Jennifer.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna have to adjust this one a little bit. Okay. Good evening, councilors. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Jennifer Heston Mullins. I was a temporary resident of Oxford for four years in the nineties, and I've now been a permanent resident of Oxford for almost 11 years. And tonight, I'm here speaking on behalf of the leadership team of Age Friendly Oxford, and then my day job is I am the Associate Director of Research at Scripps Gerontology Center. So thank you for having us here tonight. I'm gonna give a very brief overview on some age-friendly initiatives and what they are for those that may not be familiar, and then update you on what's been happening with Oxford's age-friendly initiative. Thank you. Pointed the wrong way. So the AARP Network of Age Friendly States and Communities was established in April of 2012 as an independent affiliate of the World Health Organization Global Network for Age Friendly Cities and Communities. As of January 2023, there are 818 network members nationwide and 28 in Ohio. Several years ago, the Ohio communities in the network formed the Coalition of Age Friendly Communities in Ohio, and these communities meet regularly to share best practices and collaborate. There we go. Sorry, I'm pointing it in the wrong place. There we go. In their initial work, the World Health Organization focused on key elements of community livability, which they called domains. These domains are interconnected, and they may overlap and interact with each other. AARP's work on attributes of livable communities closely aligned with these domains. And we have domains in the built environment, which include outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation and housing, and also domains in the social environment, which includes social participation, respect and social inclusion, civic participation and employment, communication and information, and community support and health services. AARP network members are focused on building livable communities, and those are "great places for all ages", as the slogan that we use, with a specific inclusion of older adults. So a livable community, in our view, has affordable and appropriate housing and transportation options, offers supportive community features and services, enhances independence and enables aging in place, and supports engagement in civic, economic, and the social life of the community. So this work is about making a community where people thrive as they age. We have a specific focus on older adults, but we don't believe that that a focus on older adults has to come at the expense of any other age groups. So we don't view it as older adults or, we view it as older adults and. Because many of the things that are good for older adults in a community are also good for community members of younger agers, who we like to refer to as future older adults.
With any luck at all.
If you're lucky. Due to the dedication, advocacy, hard work, and passion of community members Anne Garrison Welton and Jesse Leek, who many of you are familiar with, and members of the Oxford Village Network, Oxford officially joined the AARP network at the end of 2017. AARP requires that application to the network be approved by the highest-ranking local government official, and this was accomplished with a resolution from Mayor Kate Rumeneer in the Oxford City Council, which we are grateful for. And at the time we joined the network, Oxford was the 191st community in the nation to join the network, and we were the third community in the state of Ohio. And as I shared earlier, there are now 818 communities in the nation and 28 in Ohio, and 18 of those in Ohio have joined just since 2020. So this work is very much alive and thriving within our state and also across the nation. Age-friendly network members follow a five-year cycle of work, in which we assess community needs, and we develop an action plan to address those identified needs to the best of our ability. We implement our action plans, and then we evaluate our progress. So our first cycle of work ended in January of 2023, and we are currently in our second cycle of work. Our vision is an inclusive, livable community with housing, transportation, social opportunities, and services that support the well-being of citizens of all ages. Age Friendly Oxford is a completely grassroots volunteer organization. We have no paid staff, and we have no regular source of income. Up to this point, most of our work has been accomplished through grants and donations. Anne Welton and Jesse Leek led AFO through our first cycle of work, and our second cycle is being led by three pillar organizations that have collaborated to move things forward. The City of Oxford, which serves as the official applicant to the network and provides regulatory guidance for us. Oxford Seniors, which serves as our financial agent, they have a 501(c)(3), we are not in that capacity yet, and they also serve as the face of AFO and our postal mailing address and phone number, and Scripps Gerontology Center, which provides administrative and technical support, coordinates our meetings and activities, and manages our communications, including the webpage, email, and social media. Scripps has also donated 5% of my time and an 18-hour graduate assistant position that's dedicated to AFO. Day-to-day decision-making is handled by the AFO leadership team, which meets monthly, and it's made up of one representative from the City of Oxford, which is currently Seth Kropin Baker, one representative from Oxford Seniors, which is Emily Lickte, one representative from Scripps Gerontology Center, which is me, two Miami graduate assistants, Julia Ruscho and Jen Justice, who is here this evening, and two older adult community members, Lee Fisher and Jan Reinhardt. This spring, we also have a Miami undergraduate intern working with us, Jessica Tachi. The leadership team is guided by a community advisory group, which meets quarterly, and is made up of community members and representatives from various sectors and organizations within the greater Oxford area. And I see many of them here tonight, and we are appreciative that those folks engage with our work. AFO conducted our first community needs assessment in 2018, and in 2023, we conducted another community survey to evaluate the efforts of our first cycle of work and to help us identify priorities for our second cycle. These surveys were conducted with extensive in-kind support from Scripps Gerontology Center, which we're very grateful. And the 2018 survey specifically targeted members in the Oxford area who were age 50 and older. The 2023 survey was open to all Oxford area community members age 18 and older. In both surveys, respondents were asked to identify what they felt were the top three priorities for Oxford to address. This table shows the rankings of priority areas for both the 2018 and 2023 surveys. At both times, housing, transportation, and health and wellness were in the top three. In 2018, respondents chose communication as the fourth category, and those four top areas were the basis for our action plan for the first phase. In 2023, social participation, inclusion, and educational opportunities moved into the fourth position. So we believe that the isolation experienced by many of our community members during COVID-19, and also AFO's concerted efforts on providing avenues for communication across those who are not digitally connected and those who are digitally connected, we hope have had some impact in those areas. I'm gonna quickly highlight some of the work that AFO has been doing in areas of social participation, respect and social inclusion, and communication and information. So you may have noticed that I am wearing a bright blue shirt. This spring, we launched an initiative called the Blue Shirt Bunch. And the Blue Shirt Bunch is a group of community volunteers that are committed to helping folks make connections and have a friendly person to interact with at local events. So Oxford has a lot of great stuff going on, but many folks are hesitant to attend. If they don't think they're gonna know anyone there, if they don't know who they're gonna talk to, if they don't know who they're gonna sit with. And so the Blue Shirt volunteers wear their blue shirts to signal that they are welcome, person to come and talk to if you wanna have conversation, if you wanna go sit by someone, and you wanna have an opportunity to just interact. If there are folks who wanna become a Blue Shirt volunteer, you just need to reach out to AFO, and I'll have that information for you, and we'd be happy to work with you on that. At the end of last year, we started the Community Conversation Series as an opportunity for people of all backgrounds and situations to come together and discuss topics that apply to all ages. So far in the series, we've discussed ageism, and we've discussed social isolation and loneliness. And our next community conversation is on the subject of volunteering, and it's going to occur on Wednesday, April 24, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Lane Public Library. So all of our community conversations are free and open to the public for anyone to participate in. In terms of communication and information, we maintain a listserv of 255 email addresses through which we share aging-related and other information. Additionally, we maintain a website and a Facebook page to help facilitate communication for citizens that are not digitally connected or digitally comfortable. Last year, we applied for and were awarded a grant from the City of Oxford Community Assistance Fund of the Greater Oxford Community Foundation to produce 12 monthly issues of a paper newsletter called the O-Town News. And so we've been doing that, and the current distribution of O-Town News is 850 paper copies and an electronic distribution on top of that of 364. 330 of those paper copies are mailed directly to the homes of citizens, and the other copies are distributed to the Knowles of Oxford, Oxford Seniors home-delivered meal clients, Parkview Arms residents, and all those strategic locations within the City of Oxford, and Oxford Township, and Milverd, Hanford, and Riley Townships. The O-Town News grant funding is going to end this June, and we are engaged in conversations with other community organizations around the establishment of a new print newspaper to serve the Oxford area. We're glad to be part of those discussions. We do have a survey that's currently out in the field, so there's a QR code here, and I happen to have paper copies that also have a QR code on them with me tonight. This is, we are holding this survey in connection with our grant activities and also in partnership with the Coalition for a Healthy Community Oxford Area. So it opened on March 1, and this will be open until April 8. I know there's a few things going on between now and then, but we might be able to catch some people. It can be completed on paper and online. So we wanna use this information, we will share the findings with the public, and we hope that it will help guide future efforts to keep greater O-Town connected. And then, our next steps, we will be this year developing our action plan based on identified priorities and available resources. We will be implementing our action plan between 2024 and 2028, and then in 2028, in the last year, we will evaluate our second cycle. So I have our contact information included in the slides of how to reach us, some age-friendly resources, and then also just give everyone a chuckle and help us think about the true meaning of accessibility. I'm going to close by sharing this photo that I took in my hometown in northwest Ohio several years ago, where we are meeting the law of accessibility, but kind of accessibility to nowhere, I guess you'd call that. So just a way for us to think about, you know, sometimes we think we're being accessible, but are we really being accessible? So I wanna thank you for your time, and I will take any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate it very much. Is there anyone who has any questions for Jennifer? It's a good report.
I just wanted to highlight something that you said as far as there are no paid employees, and that the amount of time that Scripps has donated, their time, and the graduate students is so very much appreciated.
Thank you. I'll relate that to my colleagues and our leadership, and we believe very strongly in this as an organization for Scripps, and also just as community members who live here and work here, so, thank you.
You do very good work, and I can say that from being involved. You do a very good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, my next item is appointments to boards and commissions, and we have an opening on the Butler County Board of Health. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to renew the appointment for Dr. Molly Emmert.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment is made, and now we'll move to public comments. Again, our apologies that the public hearing that we anticipated having was unable to happen, and it will happen at our next meeting. But if you have anything you would like to address to council about items that are not on the agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, we would ask you to come forward now and give us your name and where you live, and we will listen to you for a good five minutes. James? Go ahead, Jim. You can come. All right. We'll hold on to that thought. Anne, welcome.
Anne Fuer. I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I'm a member of the Community Advisory Group for Age Friendly Oxford, and I just wanna echo the importance of this initiative in collaboration between the City, Oxford Seniors, and Age Friendly Oxford, and the work that Jennifer does in her leadership role in that group is tremendous. I also wanna acknowledge Emily Lickte, who's Director of Oxford Seniors, one of the other partners, and the city staff. This kind of partnership between nonprofits, the university, and the community is my sense of the ideal collaboration that brings together the major institutions in the community that are tasked with serving the needs of all members of the community. So it's, I think, a wonderful initiative to support. I was here and intended to speak to, reported the external reviewers in relation to the November 18 incident. And as Secretary of the NAACP and facilitator for Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice, I sent out emails asking members of the public to come tonight, to witness, to speak, to hear the report, and to represent the public, which is represented, I believe, in a monolithic way in the report, and that was really one of my critiques. I have a number of critiques. We had a well-orchestrated presentation of questions that you'll hear, I guess, on April 16. And although it is on the agenda, for people who aren't familiar with the schedule of City Council, be back here in two weeks, assuming there's not the same kind of weather threat. It did give me the opportunity to sit down with Larry Nadler, the Chair of the Police Community Relations and Review Commission, and I appreciate his collaboration with the NAACP to plan upcoming responses and opportunities for community input, further community input about the report. So I appreciate the council receiving it and giving the opportunity for public participation, and hope to see people back here. In two weeks, I think you'll agree that the number of people who are here tonight show the importance of this report and this issue to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. I would add that council does very much put value on this report and on public participation in it. Anyone else wish to address council? Okay. We'll move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are any items needing removal? Okay, I would then ask for a motion or a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolution. You can read the first one.
A resolution placing a moratorium not to exceed 12 months on alley development within the City of Oxford, Ohio.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and Sam, you can talk to us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On behalf of staff, I'm bringing forward a moratorium resolution regarding alley development. There's been several, there've been four of the department heads that have been concerned about this issue over the past several years, and so we wanted to request a moratorium, and I'll explain what that is. I know you're well familiar with moratoriums, but just for the general public's perspective. A moratorium is a tool used by municipalities to establish a temporary suspension of an activity to give the municipality time and opportunity to plan for accommodating or managing the development, so it's not an absolute prohibition that's long-term or permanent, but it's a temporary suspension while the issue's being studied and researched. In our case, we are requesting a moratorium or a hold on alley development and subdivisions for parcels of land that do not front on public streets. So I pulled some goals out of the comprehensive plan that are related, and these are in the resolution mentioned as well. Development quality, enhanced character, and the main focus of the request comes from public service excellence surrounding police and fire and EMS access to these properties, as well as utilities and streets access has been a challenge as well. Service trucks, fire trucks, garbage, garbage service, it's difficult because the alleys were never really intended for the type of development that we've seen in recent years, but police and fire have also expressed concern. Over the past several years, we've seen particularly single-family homes being developed on parcels of land that had been divided many, many years ago. So a little bit of the history in that regard. These lots were divided many, many years ago, which really divided what was not intended to be the layout of the mile square, but they were divided and made into parcels of land that faced different direction and did not have frontage on a public street, and later on became places where development could happen and was allowed as long as the lots met the square footage requirement of 3,000 square feet. And then up until 2017, there was a requirement that basically put any of those cases to the Board of Zoning Appeals for what was called principal entrance, and that was changed in the code around the time the accessory dwelling unit provision was added for the R3 MS district. And so we started to see some more of those, and we kept having that same issue of access and visibility and public service to those developments. So there are 49 such lots that could still be built upon, that we've got on a map that's in your packet. On the screen there is a photo of one that was, what was built in recent years, so it's actually, it appears to be the backyard of a home, but it's actually a separate parcel of land. We call a lot of record, according to codes, so it's a separate parcel of land, many times owned by the same owner as the front parcel. And these are some pictures of some other developments that have occurred in recent years that are on what we call alley lots, lots that do not have frontage on a public street, that have presented some challenges. And staff have commented on them and provided comments to, in some cases, the Board of Zoning Appeals, but oftentimes, there's not a good way for the Board of Zoning Appeals to mitigate the concern and address it in a way that's holistic to all of the future alley lot type of developments. So our plan would be to take this time period and look at the various issues of serving these properties in an efficient way and see what could be done to mitigate those concerns that have been raised. And there's the map that we have in the packet that shows the parcels of land that do not front on public streets. So it's mile square area. And there's a list of the examples of the type of research that I've mentioned already that we would be doing during the moratorium time period, and some of the issues that have come up related to visibility, the additional parking demand. One of the primary concerns from the fire department has been getting the equipment into those properties because of just the narrowness of the alleys, overhead power lines. There's some challenges there. So we would be analyzing those different things and interviewing some other jurisdictions to see if there's some things that can be done, even things like naming the alleys could help to bring some identification to these properties. So the effect of the moratorium, if it was approved tonight, would be to, it would not allow any more plats or consolidations or lot splits that would create building sites for alley lots. However, if they're already, actually, we have one that's submitted that is in process now. It could still be heard on the Planning Commission agenda, but a building permit could not be approved, but the plat itself could be reviewed and decided upon by the Planning Commission. And the effect of the moratorium would also prohibit any single-family building permits on those alley lots that are existing today during the moratorium time period. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address this? Jim, come on up.
All right, so.
Give us your name and where you live.
You guys don't know me?
I do.
Jim Clausen, 6405 Contreras Road.
Thanks.
In Oxford.
Thank you.
I got a real problem with this. Number one, this is, these are lots of record. They are your legal right to do, I mean, again, to do, if you need to build a house, you gotta go through all the zoning, you gotta go through all the particulars to make it happen. Once that has been approved, you should be, you should be able to build this home. This whole thing, another issue that I have, not one of the property owners was notified. We just heard this just by chance today. So all the property owners cannot, would not be here to be addressed. We just got lucky and heard about it just through the grapevine. So that's a big issue for me. If you wanna do a moratorium, then really, don't you think you should, you should give the people that own these lots here to give their side of the story? And again, I guess it goes down from a legal standpoint as far as property rights. If you, if a city can stop you from doing something on your own property, I mean, that's kind of against the American way. That should, that should, you know, again, this is your property, you should be allowed to do what's rightfully so. And that's build a house. And I think if you look at some of the examples, I mean, there are some really cool alley houses. I mean, really cool. We build a bunch of them. And you drive by and go, oh, that's really nice. I mean, it just gives, it gives Oxford character. And if I took you guys through some of these houses, you'd go, oh, man, this is really nice. This is, and it gives the students something that, you know, something cool, you know, with balconies and everything else, that I just think that adds to Oxford. So, again, I'm giving you my opinion on this. I don't know if it's gonna matter, but I hope it does. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jim. We always appreciate you coming. Yeah. Welcome.
Hello, it's my first time. My name is Jim Platt, 6583 Tall Timbers Court in Mason, Ohio. And I'm one of the owners, two owners of a, the property's owned by Jim for Property Partners. And so the blue house that was on the picture, that's And so the blue house that was on the picture that Sam showed, right across there, that big metal gray shed garage that's been there for decades. We brought, we bought that lot and the other stuff in the summer of 2018 with the understanding we could build on it. Right now, the fire department cannot go around that corner because the existing building is on the alleyway. It's over 2,000 square feet. We were gonna, you know, start building here in the fall, demolish it, put a house in, but do the proper setbacks. And you wouldn't have the ugly old building there. So that's one. The other thing, we also own student housing up in Columbus. And just to give you an idea of difference, in Columbus, I add density. I do an ADU on the back of a house. They approve it, and they'll tax rebate the house. They allow building on lots that face the alleyways. I don't think they name the alleys. I could be wrong there. But they do put the property manager's name of the company, like it's a placard that has to be affixed to the houses. And it's mainly for cops and fire. But, you know, so it's, I understand you want to do more density and all, but it just feels like there's some headwinds. And us specifically for that one lot, we would actually improve how it is now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming down for that.
Good evening. Scott Webb, I'm an architect in town. I appreciate seeing five of my projects on this slide. There's six buildings here. So I wanted to maybe talk about this from a little broader perspective, perhaps. You know, it was not that long ago that Planning Commission made major changes to the zoning code specifically for the mile square. This happened, as you recall, certainly not long after the annex. Apartments were approved kind of on the perimeter of town. And Planning Commission, led by Dr. Prithrick, kind of acknowledged the fact that, you know, we can't stop this by just trying to keep stepping on the balloon and thinking it's not going to pop up somewhere else. So let's talk about where we would like to have density. So Planning Commission spent some time on this, targeted the mile square in specific, the northeast quad, so to speak, of the mile square. With the idea being, you know, let's be proactive about this. Let's create incentives in a way to encourage extra development in these areas. This is where we want students to live. We have infrastructure here. This could lessen the need for parking, lessen the need for cars if people can live near the university. So what grew out of these work sessions and ultimately Planning Commission was a desire to increase density in the mile square. And one of the discussions that came up was specifically all the vacant land that's buried in the middle of the block that, you know, is just simply being unused. And Planning Commission went so far in their quest for density here to write a whole new code section for the additional dwelling units that are effectively the kind of houses that we're talking about here tonight. They're houses behind other houses. The accessory dwelling unit section can apply whether or not there's an alley behind you or not. So fire access is going to be on a driveway at that point. I would certainly make the argument that, you know, having every single block bisected by alleys in both directions improves the safety compared to what the additional dwelling unit talked about there. So tonight, we have a resolution to suspend activities on these sites for a year. And for me, the question at hand is why? So what has changed since the careful study, months of work that Planning Commission did when we targeted this, we held work sessions, you know, we went work sessions with city council? What has changed since then? These developments that we've looked at tonight? Are we having more fires? Are we having less health? Are we having less safety? What is the downfall here? And secondarily, why is it such an emergency that it has to go on as a resolution as opposed to, let's start back at Planning Commission and let Planning Commission do the work that Planning Commission does? But by doing it a resolution, property owners weren't notified. And by staff and everyone's own admission here, we've got 49 potential development lots that are being affected without representation. And from what I can see, I don't see the emergency that requires this to happen now that a resolution needs to be drafted. I don't think that the results of the developments that have happened since Planning Commission made this warrant a complete reversal in doing so in an emergency manner. We have to do it as a resolution and create a moratorium. So.
Super, thank you. Anyone else like to address this? Chief Deathridge, did you want to address this? All right. Okay. Seeing no others, I'll turn it over to counsel and ask for your discussion.
Can I ask, Chris, do I need to recuse myself since I live in the mile square near these properties?
Do you have an alley that, or a property that might be subject to development?
No, I just live next to it. So I just want to make sure this isn't like a conflict of interest.
Let me ponder that right back.
I'm okay, okay.
I think this is a, while it may affect the mile square disproportionately. Sam, is this only affecting the mile square?
Yes.
Carry on the conversation. Let me ponder that.
You ponder. Dave?
So I would like to just ask a question of whenever, Sam, you're ready for a question. So a moratorium is a policy tool that's used to give some time so that you can do something to address an issue. And the wait is worth it because in the end, there've been some resolution. And typically, that might be a code change that would improve a situation. Can you try to help me imagine if there's a moratorium for a year, what will be able to be changed to address this? For example, this is out of sync with the code revision. So we're not going to be able to revise our zoning code, which is 18 months out. So what realistically will we be able to do in a year that would enable us to better manage this development?
That's a great question, and I think Mr. Webb touched on it as well. Planning and zoning code would be one of the topics. There would also be building code. There would also be infrastructure that we would need to look at. And then also talking with dispatching agencies and fire and police, kind of an overall, so it wouldn't be just Planning Commission. And that's why we would need to look at potential additional requirements or additional things the city could do to be able to better serve these properties in emergencies. So some of those are operational and administrative. They're not all zoning code legislation. So that is the reason why the time period would allow us to look at all those at the same time. So it would be multiple departments involved. There would be at least four departments involved in it.
But I guess what I'm saying is that if the moratorium is just for a year, it might be lifted in a year before we've had the chance to make any code changes. Is that correct?
Well, if there are zoning code changes that would address this issue, we would do those separate from the zoning code rewrite.
Okay, all right. Because I've been thinking about the zoning code rewrite is one big whole enchilada.
We would bring it as one package.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And that was just my kind of concern because I guess I would say, you know, I actually take pride in the alley development. I think it's been a good solution to a certain problem. I do, however, understand that it was like one of those things we hadn't done before, and we've learned along the way about the stormwater drainage. And there are issues related to it that we probably, the operational issues that probably might not have been able to fully anticipate before we'd had the development. Is that correct? I mean, so stuff is becoming apparent. So what are some of those issues? You've cited the fire and EMS thing. I know there were issues with gutters and not being able to tie in to drains. What are those?
Stormwater, lighting.
Okay.
Visibility for emergency services and garbage services. Those are some of the issues that we have had.
So, and you're confident that if there were a moratorium for years, some of those could actually be remedied so that we could go back to greenlighting what I think, you know, we don't have, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. But I guess that's my only question, is the timing of a moratorium? Just so it's a lot longer than it needs to be so that we can accomplish the things that would actually address the issues?
Yeah, if we can get those addressed sooner, we'll certainly be bringing reports back to counsel sooner. It does add housing density to the community, which is a good thing. But there are things that have to be addressed along with that.
Okay. And just as, I mean, I can't predetermine it, but it's not the end. The moratorium is not a pretext for reversing course on alley development. It's just a matter of managing it better. Okay.
Jason, did you want to?
Yeah, I had some, so one, I was, sorry, Sam, to keep you up there. Is a full year necessary? Could we make do with six months? Could we at least, you said you were going to give reports to us. I'd love to have a report at least in six months so we can reevaluate because this is absolutely what we want. Mr. Webb's comments, I completely agree with. At the same time, I'm in Planning Commission, and I know every time we have one of these, we have concerns from our safety experts. And we review, you know, you can do whatever you want on your own property unless that property suddenly prevents fire to spread among the entire community. It's a public safety issue. So I definitely want this to continue, as you stated. And I would love to be able to shorten the window if we can because hopefully, what comes out of this is it's a more expedited process because we have salts and things. That makes sense. I threw a lot of questions in there.
Yeah, I would think at least six months, hopefully not as much as 12.
Could we definitely get a report halfway through to reevaluate?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, I have two questions to our law director, putting you in the hot seat again. Is this moratorium in any way a violation of private property rights, to your knowledge?
The answer is no. Private property, there are limitations to use based upon what a zoning code is. A zoning code by definition does have limits on property rights. The length of the moratorium, if it exceeds a certain period of time, can be unconstitutional. A year is the outer limits of that, depending on the circumstances. And I think that the reason sometimes a year is chosen is there's a belief that it will take longer than six months. But I don't think the expectation is a moratorium would last longer than a year. And I certainly hope that it wouldn't.
So this could be an under-promise, over-deliver possibly, if it can be done earlier. But my other question is, if I could hear from Chief Deathridge, if you have any examples of some challenges that your staff may have faced in some of these alley-developed homes? Because I support the density as well, but we've had long conversations about fire safety and burden on our fire and EMS staff. So I would like to hear from you if possible.
So luckily, I can't think of any off the top of my head that we've had actual issues. But part of fire prevention and trying to stop problems down the road is to foresee these issues, you know, with having good access to these buildings, being able to find them, you know, all the things that go along with that. Just trying to be proactive and stop a problem. You know, we pack all these things in here. We get one on fire, you know, we're lobbled it up losing a block. And I don't want to be the guy that says, I didn't do anything to try to stop from that happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just, since the chief is up there, let's say our density, our development patterns change. Like, could that in the future require that maybe we have different sorts of equipment? I mean, like, a ladder truck is hard to navigate in an alley, but cities have different vehicles that are better suited to, I mean, you go to Europe and they've got the smallest fire trucks you've ever seen because they have alleys. So is that something like instead of letting the ladder truck determine the land use, can we be thinking about equipment? So if this development continues, that we can service it safely?
I mean, that's something we could look at while we're taking this time to look into this issue. You know, a lot of these buildings are right up against the alleys. There's no, you know, like in a regular street, you've got room to get a fire truck away from a building that's on fire. In an alley, you don't. I mean, it's basically less than one aisle wide. There's no place to get them out of the way. And there's no, not a lot of space to like pull hose out of the crosslays off the side of the truck and things like that. It's tough to operate around if you can even get them in the alleys. You know, our biggest issue is not having to drag hose manually down a whole alley and around a house to attack a fire.
But this could be the kind of, for those communities that have maybe embraced the ADUs or the alley development, they must have fought through some of these issues. They may be further out ahead on the learning curve with.
Could be.
Okay, so that could be what this time could be used for?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody on this side want to talk about it?
Yeah, we've got a couple of questions. Question for Mr. Perry. Most of these auxiliary dwellings that we've built were built as single-family houses. So were any of, they wouldn't have been required to be sprinkled?
That's correct.
Okay. You see where I'm going with this?
Yes. We are thinking about that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
As one of the potential mitigation measures. That would be part of our research, looking at the cost and the feasibility of that as a possibility.
Because that's my reply to, Columbus has 10,000 firefighters. We have nine. So, yeah. Thanks, Sam. That was my only question in that regard. And I just want to say too, you know, I love the alley development, Scott. You've done a great job with some of these, Jim. You've built some great and popular properties. But, you know, and I don't think we're going to completely stop you from ever building on the vacant lots. We just might have to do it a little differently, and it might be a little bit delayed before we do it because, you know, we don't always get it right. So we'll probably.
Nope, nope, nope. Sorry. Alex, do you have anything you wanted to say?
I don't know how immensely additive it'll be. I agree. I think that, you know, the alley homes do add really great character. And I'm wholeheartedly in favor of increased density, and I think that alley homes are a great way to do it. I just also want to make sure that we're doing it as safely as possible. Not to say that you are not already doing it as safely as you can. I acknowledge that. But there, you know, we're just, some of those pictures on the maps where I was looking at how tightly crammed those are and thinking about, you know, in the history of America, we've maybe done some things where we've created fire situations that we didn't need to. So I want to do it. I think we're doing it as safely as we can now. I just want to make sure we are dotting every i and crossing every t as we do it.
Okay. My comment is I feel very uncomfortable with two things here. Number one, the 12 months, I think is a long time when people have money invested and they want to build on their property. I think that gives us a lot of time to come up with it, but it puts a burden on people who have invested large sums of money in some cases in the mile square to try and get property and to try and build on it. I'm also concerned about the representation issue that was brought up. And I think that in something like this, it would have been prudent to notify the owners of record of all of those. So it appears that I'm a minority on the council, but I would certainly support two things if someone wanted to propose them. One would be an amendment to change 12 to six months. The second thing I would support would be a motion to table this so that we bring it up at our next meeting and have the opportunity for more people whose properties are affected to be able to be notified about it and not just find out about it after the fact. So.
I'll help you with one of those motions.
Okay.
I would, I mean, I would prefer a six-month moratorium with the possibility or expectation that an extension is needed, an extension is needed. But I'd rather aim for six months. So I would move that the resolution be amended to reflect a moratorium of six months.
Okay. Is there a second?
Before we get to that, I want to answer Councilor Ragus' question.
Oh, okay.
So, under Ethics Opinion 92 dash 019, the issue of a counselor voting on a matter has to do with whether or not that the increase or enhancement in the value of property, an opportunity or ability to sell property at a profit or for a commission or for any other benefit to property falls within the definition of anything of value. So the question is, is there something that would be of value and that the elected official is using the power of the office to obtain something of value? I can't specifically address the particularities of someone's home, but it would seem to me that this does not create a conflict of interest, particularly because of two things. One, this is a discussion of a moratorium that has a general public purpose. And two, it is not an intention to permanently ban the use. It's simply discussion. So I conclude that there's no conflict of interest.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we have a motion on the table to amend. Okay, we have a motion on the table to amend from 12 months to six months. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now we can have discussion if needed on that amendment. Are you ready to vote?
And a moratorium could be extended by resolution at six months if we just needed additional time? Okay.
All those in favor of the motion to amend indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution is amended. Anyone want to table it? Looks like I wouldn't get a second.
I'm not going to be here in the next session, so that feels like if I do that, I'm just like, oh, have that conversation without me.
I feel like we've heard the concerns and I, and I guess there would be, I mean, I think I know that what the 39 property owners would say. I also know what a fire chief would say. I, I, I sympathize with it, but I feel like we have the, I have the information that I need to.
Okay.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. So I agree there was a communication issue, I think we should have reached out. However, I anticipate the concerns of those who haven't been communicated to. And I think we're all for this, right? In terms of increasing density, using alleys.
Absolutely.
The issue is safety. So I feel like if we're still going to vote this way because we're worried about that safety and we know there are concerns, nothing's going to change except we push it back two weeks. I'd rather this end sooner than later. So I, I was very close to recommending it, but.
All right, are you ready to vote then? All those in favor of the resolution as amended to six months indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted. We'll move to second resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to develop a design and cost estimation proposal for a permanent public restroom in the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Uptown Park.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Thank you for seconding. Sam, welcome back.
Thank you. We've been talking about a public restroom and it's appeared in your budget for the past couple of years. And there's some, some funds set aside in, in the budget for a public restroom. So we've been looking at this, a couple, architecture firms, local architecture firm, and then another one has looked at this. We did present to HAPC, Historic and Architecture Preservation Commission, a couple of concepts. So you're not, I'm not asking you to review the concept necessarily tonight for architecture, but at least to authorize the city to consider moving forward on getting a cost estimate and a design established because this would be taking up green space in our uptown parks. And that real estate is, is very precious to the community. It's our outdoor living room, I think I've heard some people say many times. So with your blessing, we would move forward with that. Along the lines of that same issue, the Uptown Fountain and Splash Pad is in dire need of repair and replacement. And talking to Mr. Dreisbach, I think we're going to try to get it to limp along one more year. But the.
Eric's going to love that. I'm sorry.
The, the requirements now for a replacement of that actually do require a bathroom. So these two projects do have some synergy and so this, this does need to be done for that purpose as well, which is why the location ended up being on the West Park. Martin Luther King Jr. Park is what the consultant had come up with because of that. It also, the spot that they have recommended is kind of on the backside of the park in the sense of not taking away from the centrality of the way the park's designed and the symmetry of all of that. So a couple of concepts which are kind of fun that the HAPC discussed, I'll go through those. And the HAPC talked about kind of mixing some of the elements. And Councilor French shaking her head, and Mike Smith was there as well, so. So the, there's some interesting materials and so we're looking at vandalism prevention and getting natural light if possible and incorporating public art. And maybe even having a contest for some tile on, on the art. So one is a little bit more modern and the other one is still modern, but not, doesn't have the rounded design. We haven't decided on whether it would be one stall or two. So there's just a lot of things up in the air that would need to be worked out. So happy to answer any questions, but the concepts are being developed and we'd like to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Mr. Ellerby, welcome back.
Glad to be back. Glenn Ellerby Jr., I am representing the Chamber of Commerce today. The Chamber of Commerce wholeheartedly supports this endeavor. It's a, it's an amenity that has been desired by, by the public for a long time. You know, when I was on council, we discussed, discussed this years ago when we had some federal funding. And I still believe we should have one of those. It's definitely going to allow our creative placemaking efforts to be enhanced because now people have the ability to stay longer because there were some challenges with people enjoying themselves uptown and then needing to have some facilities and not being able to do that. So again, the chamber wholeheartedly supports this endeavor.
Thank you.
I have personal comment.
Yes.
Glenn Ellerby, 158 Silver Lee.
Okay.
Spend the money on this. And the reason why I say that is you saw what happened with our water park. And, and, you know, we got a lot of feedback on the amount of money we spent on that. However, when it was completed, it was a model that other municipalities came and asked us about and said, hey, how'd you do this? What was the process? We want to emulate that. This is another opportunity for them. Also, there are five businesses right next to that corner that you guys are talking about. Please include them. You guys just had a reasonable conversation about an issue where stakeholders wasn't, weren't involved and it kind of went sideways. So just during this process, please keep those stakeholders in mind. And I thank you for actually doing this and I appreciate everybody and their efforts in making that happen.
Thank you, Glenn. Would anyone else like to address this resolution? Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Welcome.
I'm Tony Smith, I live at 716 South College Avenue. And I teach at Miami University in the Arts Department. And the mention of having a contest for whatever goes on the outside, I would love to have the university be involved. We have students that could use this kind of project. And so if there's any way to make that happen, I'd be happy to act as a conduit for that.
Thank you for offering to help facilitate, we appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this? Okay, thank you, counselors. Any concerns or questions?
I just think this is great. I think Glenn touched on the fact that we haven't always had the world's most accessibly available public restrooms at uptown events and this really helps that out. I think this could be a real asset. Plus, with, as Sam mentioned, it being tied to the splash pad replacement, that seems like a no-brainer. So thank you for bringing this forward.
I happen to be old enough that I was, I was mayor when we opened that splash pad. I still remember the lady who came up to me and said, Mr. Mayor, do you realize there are people in the fountain? I said, yes, ma'am, it was designed for that. Oh, never mind. Name was Emily Letitia. Anyway, only a few get that joke. If there are, I think this is a great idea. It is something we've talked about for a long time. And I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. And I want to thank Glenn and others who've come forward to lend their support to it.
I just want to make a comment about, as we go through the design process, public bathrooms can be very scary for a woman. I think for anyone, but especially for a woman. And I'm sure we've seen those really cool designs in Japan, right, where it's like see-through. And then when you turn on the lights, it becomes opaque. It is amazing to know that someone is not in there waiting for you in a public bathroom. So I would love something like that so that we actually feel safe to use it.
It's a good thing to think about.
Not afraid of that until right now.
Oh, yes, I never use public restrooms because of that.
Okay. And if I could, it's funny because I teach an urban planning class and I ask the students to generate like, what's an urban problem? And how many different student groups have focused on the lack of a restroom going back? I mean, it's one of those things like water softening that's been talked about since before grandparents were alive, probably. So, but I also would say, even though we think of it like amenity, economic development, I think in a lot of places, the, the right to go the bathroom in a public place is a right. You know, people have urinal bowel syndrome, have children, you know, like, and so the idea that we've been limping along without one for as long as we have, it's going to be really nice to just do it. So, super exciting.
Can I make one more comment too? Are we going to gender these bathrooms or will they be, like, I'm assuming it'll be just unisex, correct? Yeah, okay, great.
Yeah, just restrooms.
Yeah.
And they brought up a good point about, hopefully this, I assume it's going to be built in, but access for families to, you know, diapered, non-dipert kids and everything else, I'm sorry.
That's what design is for.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for the comments. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to the next one.
A resolution opposing partisan gerrymandering and supporting a proposed Citizens Not Politicians Initiative for balanced legislative districts in Ohio.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. And in this case, David, you brought this up.
Well, I, I brought it up just merely because the League of Women Voters and Ohioans have, have brought up the issue that Ohioans have supported multiple times. Support for processes that draw congressional and state house districts in a nonpartisan way. Our legislatures are just so stubborn and, and in resisting the courts. It's unconstitutional, yet they do it anyway. And so it's unfortunate that the people have to try again, but, but the people are. And I just have to say, this is a very small way of saying thank you and a little bit of a, a little bit of a help for all of those people who are out there gathering signatures. I've been approached by, every time I'm anywhere in Ohio, I'm approached by a good citizen who says, have you signed this politician? I've signed this, this petition. So, yeah, this is a little thing, but it's just to express our frustration with gerrymandering, which is bad for democracy in Ohio and which trickles down to with communities. And also a thank you to citizens who are using the initiative process and wish them luck. But that's all I'll say about it because I know that the League of Women Voters is among those who's really like moving this far, who can talk about what's in it, but I'll just, that's kind of, the resolution is in part a thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this?
Perhaps.
Perhaps. Welcome, Kathy.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kathy Brinkman, I live on Emerald Wood Drive in Oxford. I'm the Communication Director for the League of Women Voters of Oxford and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the League. So first, I'd like to thank Councilmember Pritchard for introducing this resolution to council. I think it's important for a number of reasons. When district maps aren't drawn fairly, everyone suffers, including local governments. The state legislature becomes unresponsive to voters as well as local government. So it's important that cities show their support for fair processes. Secondly, discussion of this resolution is a good way of informing voters of what is at stake. And so I'd like to take a minute to explain the background of recent redistricting efforts in our state. So the Citizens Not Politicians Initiative is collecting signatures to bring reform to Ohio's redistricting process. If passed by Ohio voters in November, this change to the Ohio Constitution will remove politicians from the process of creating legislative maps and shift that responsibility to citizens through the creation of an independent redistricting commission. So you might ask, why is this important and haven't we done this? And yes, we did. We did this in 2015 and we did this in 2018. The problem is that the politicians on the Ohio Redistricting Commission did not follow the process. Seven times in 2021 and 2022, the Ohio Supreme Court struck down the maps that were drawn by the Ohio, Ohio Redistricting Commission as unconstitutional. Five times for the state maps, twice for the congressional maps. So you ask, how could this possibly happen? Well, there are no consequences. The amendments that were passed in 2015 and 2018 did not have a penalty process associated. So the court sent the maps back and the Ohio Redistricting Commission started again, sometimes making tiny little tweaks and delaying and sending them back. So what happened is that by the time we got to 2022 and we had an election pending, we didn't have constitutional maps. And so a federal court stepped in and said, well, we've got to have an election. And so we used unconstitutional, gerrymandered maps to vote on in the 2022 election. So what will this solve? It will solve it all because it will create a 15-member Citizens Redistricting Commission made up of five Republicans, five Democrats, and five independents. They will represent the different geographic areas and demographics of Ohio. It prohibits current and former politicians, political party officials, and lobbyists from serving on the commission. It requires fair districts by making it unconstitutional to draw maps that favor any political party or individual politician. And it requires the commission to operate under an open and independent process that relies upon impartial map drawing specialists. So getting an Ohio constitutional amendment on the ballot is really difficult. It takes 413,000 valid signatures. And in order to get 413 valid signatures, we'll collect 700,000 signatures by June, the end of June 2024. That will get the amendment on the November 2024 ballot and it will get the new maps in place created in time for the 2026 election. So we've seen other states do this and we know that we can end gerrymandering in Ohio. I encourage everyone to sign the petition. It levels the playing field for everyone so that no political party is advantaged or disadvantaged. Thank you again.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this resolution? Seeing none? Counsel have any comments or? Nope.
Support this.
Okay.
It's so great to hear it laid out like that.
Yeah. Kathy always does a very good job. And the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and this is not about any kind of partisanship.
Well, and that's, and the way I constructed the resolution, it doesn't, I mean, we're not telling people how to vote, but they should become educated on the issue. I think if you think it's an issue, you should want it to be on the ballot. Even if you want to vote it down in November, let's have a conversation. But, you know, until we do, and so, yeah, I, I like, some people may want to continue unconstitutional gerrymandering and they can vote this down in November. But, but I think it's important that we, for our state, that we improve our democracy because it's not really working very democratically right now.
Politicians shouldn't make their own decisions.
All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted and we'll move to the fourth.
A resolution accepting the insurance bid of Insurance Specialist Group Incorporated, DBA Love Insurance Partners for the city's property and casualty insurance coverage for 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Moved and I think that was a second?
Yes, it was. Weirdly articulated.
I can help.
Heidi.
Second for a second.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This, we went to, we have our insurance renewal due, actually due yesterday. So this is requesting an approval of the resolution to pass in order to continue our insurance coverage. However, we were surprised by a couple of things when our renewal came in. There were some deductibles that were included that were not included in the past. So we ask that you do pass the resolution so that we don't have a lapse in coverage. But our insurance agent is going to start reviewing some of our policies to get, make us a little more competitive out in the market in regards to the sexual abuse and molestation, just to ensure that we, we can be covered properly since we have so many children that are involved in our Parks and Recreation Department. So these are things we're going to work on over the next six months in order to try to get a better outcome for our insurance. Remove those deductibles potentially.
Heidi, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? After all the excitement of the Citizens Not Politicians, now we're talking about insurance. After all the excitement of the Citizens Not Politicians, now we're talking about insurance. That's how it goes. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution is adopted, and we'll move to ordinances, and we have an ordinance for first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3750, supplemental budget ordinance number two, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, and we do not take motions and seconds, because we'll vote on this at our next meeting. Heidi, welcome, and you can tell us what this is.
So the first, um, issue is $113,267 for the Oak Farm, which was the, um, the addition of the realignment designs of the Oaks Trail that, that Mike brought forward to you, I believe, the last meeting. Um, and the second issue is the, we had discussed, uh, purchasing, uh, the N-A-R-D-N-A product, um, in order to, to better assist with enforcement of the short-term rental tax. Um, so that's just kind of putting this online with, uh, purchasing that, and hopefully bringing in, we did actually bring in, um, at least that much more money into the Housing Trust Fund last, at the end of 2023, um, to help cover those expenses. Um, the third issue was my fault, so when I brought the last, the, the first supplemental, I, um, omitted the actual expense. We did the transfers, we did the increases, but we, I actually forgot the expense portion of it, so I apologize. Um, and then the fourth issue is, um, budgeting money into the Enforcement and Education Fund to make, uh, adjustment for some police training that they are, um, anticipating coming later this year.
Okay.
If they wanna talk about it, they can explain it better.
Thank you very much, Heidi. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance?
Oh.
That's what I was gonna say.
Heidi.
Sorry, I forgot, I have another one. The fifth issue, uh, is $143,000.
Sure is a fifth issue.
Yeah. Um, so when we passed the appropriation ordinance back in November, the fire department was, union contract was still in negotiations, so these are the adjustments for the additions or changes to that contract that were made that affected the budget.
Okay, thank you very much. So it's important to look at that next page, okay? Okay, is there anybody who wanted to talk about it? Okay, councilors, any questions or concerns? There's a number of issues here that are important, but I think we've talked about all of them, uh, and this will come up on our next, uh, agenda, so we can vote on it then. We have no second readings, and so I'll move to announcements and communications, and I'll start with City Manager Doug Elliott.
Thank you, Your Honor. At our last council meeting, we had a really good discussion about the need for additional staff in our Division and Fire EMS, and how to pay for the additional staff. And, uh, I, I can share with you that, uh, we made offers to four part-time FireFire EMTs, and, uh, hopefully they'll accept that offer, so we're working to get, uh, back the staffing that we have budgeted, which was the nine and additional three. Uh, so, uh, that's good news. Based on our discussion at the last meeting, I drafted a, uh, a resolution of certification that we send to the county auditor about, you know, if we have this millage, how much will it raise for us? We have a pretty good estimate of what it'll be, but it's part of the, uh, statutory requirement to do, uh, a property tax increase, and so, uh, I sent it over to the county auditor, they forwarded it to the county prosecutor, and they'll get that back to me. I would plan to bring in probably two, maybe three resolutions of different levels of property tax rates, uh, and present those to city council. That's the first step. It goes to the county auditor, uh, they certify what the amount would be that we would get. Uh, what I would be proposing to city council, uh, is then we would select one of those rates, and then we would have to pass a resolution of necessity, and that would require, uh, a two-thirds majority of city council to adopt it. So, uh, I wanna get both those resolutions adopted by city council, uh, before June. Uh, we have plenty of time then, because this would be on the ballot for the general election, which is, I believe, Nov- uh, November 5th. So, I wanted to share that with city council, uh, with those, uh, two pieces of legislation. What I would be proposing to, whatever the millage that we determine, what, that we would recommend to city council, I would expect that it would be a 10-year levy, uh, because part of the problem that we face with outside millage of a property tax levy is that it doesn't grow. It, it only grows if you add new housing or new development. Uh, it cannot grow as the assessed values grow, because what happens is that they use the tax reduction factor to reduce the impact on the taxpayer. So, there's no growth with the existing development over those 10 years. So I think 10 years would give us time to evaluate it and determine if we go to the voters at the end of 10 years and ask for a renewal of it, or if we, uh, would ask for an increase in that levy. So, that's the game plan, and we'll provide you some more information on that.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, have we communicated yet with Miami?
We have not. We will be. That's the other thing that I was going to address, because, you know, we feel for, pretty strongly that Miami is going to come to the table, uh, so we need to get that resolved, because I think that'll be important as we go to the different organizations in the community to present our proposal, is that, yes, Miami has committed to this amount of money. Uh, the two, I think, have to go hand in hand, because, uh, if we don't get, uh...
Well, you have to do that in order to also get council to approve it.
That's right, that's right. So, uh, I'm, I'm confident, and I think you use the words, you know, "I'm gonna believe them unless they give me a reason to, to not."
Yeah.
So, and they recognize that this is an important service that we provide, you know, the health and safety of their students are their number-one concern. Uh, they recognize that we have, uh, FireFire paramedics that are just, uh, overworked, and so we need to address that. It's very urgent, and, you know, I intend to keep my focus on that as, as we move forward in this process.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, uh, I think we, we should not move forward till we understand what Miami's contributing and when, and I certainly would be in favor of a shorter timeline, um, for the, so that we are held accountable and Miami's held accountable to whatever agreement we come to. Because if we just pass it without Miami and for a decade, uh, there's very little incentive or assurance that they will contribute what I think is necessary. Just throwing that out.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate it. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thank you, okay?
Just feeling very fortunate that the severe weather apparently missed us tonight, that was nice. Uh, but just a, just a note to say, and we're sharing this on our social media, is, uh, this solar eclipse is, is coming up here shortly on Monday. Um, it, uh, you know, we, we just expect a lot of visitors to our area, so just sharing some common sense-type tips, get your fuel this week, uh, before the weekend, get your basic supplies.
Grater's ice cream.
Yes, and just, just, it's not anything to do with the eclipse, it's the amount of people we expect. Roads may be difficult to travel, so just bear with us, uh, we'll have extra people working and in uniform, uh, and hopefully everything goes smoothly, but, uh, just, uh, you know, you can follow us on social media to get some of that information.
Thank you very much, Chief. Jeff, you have anything tonight?
Heidi.
Heidi.
Heidi. Heidi?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I did that on purpose.
Good evening. I'm gonna piggyback on the eclipse, uh, because here in Oxford, we decided we didn't want the eclipse to just be, you know, two minutes of fun. We decided we want it to be like five days of fun. So, there are a lot of activities happening, and they actually start as early as this Thursday, uh, with some programming, I, I believe, at the Miami Art Museum, uh, and then Friday, there's a couple other programs happening, uh, at the Art Museum and at the Art Center. Then on Saturday, we are having our, uh, the, I should say, the Eclipse, uh, Once-in-a-Lifetime Festival that we're having in the Uptown Parks from 1:00 to 10:00, with live music and food trucks and vendors and all kinds of fun stuff, games, activities, inflatables. Uh, there'll be a mechanical rocket ship. If you've never rode one of those, you'll have an opportunity. Uh, Sunday, we're doing a 5K-10K space race that starts and ends at Leonard Howell Park, uh, as well as a whole bunch of movie marathons throughout the afternoon and evening, uh, and then on Monday, of course, we're hosting a couple of watch parties at different locations. Uh, and the university, I believe, is also hosting a couple of different watch parties. So, uh, a lot going on, but as Chief said, um, you know, be patient if you're in town, because it'll be congested. Uh, the weather looks like it's going to cooperate in terms of, uh, being ideal for outdoor activities.
As of today.
So, there's a lot going on. Did I miss anything, Jessica? Okay.
You have a question?
I do. Uh, do you know if we're gonna have, um, telescopes with the proper filters to be able to actually view it up close, not just, uh?
I'm not, I'm not a very big...
I'd highly recommend it if we can do it, yeah.
We have paper glasses.
Yeah.
That we bought from NASA.
Yes.
Good answer, Casey. Hey, on the 5K?
Yes.
Can, uh, I saw some people, uh, asking on social media whether they could walk, or is it only a running event?
You may, anybody may participate in the 5K-10K.
Thank you.
At any pace that you like.
I thought that was your answer, but I wanted to give you an...
You may not use a motorized vehicle for the 5K-10K.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, Sam? Jessica? Heidi?
Nothing, thank you.
Chris?
Counsel used its quota of questions on the water. I just speak no more.
We did. Michael?
Nothing, just really looking forward to this weekend and Monday.
All right. Alex?
Uh, I'm gonna use up both this week and next week's comment time. Uh, so, we had a really good discussion, um, thank you to our law director and our police chief in executive session about the, um, report that came out. Uh, I, as I've mentioned a couple of times, won't be here next week, but I will be watching via the livestream, because it's a really important conversation, and even though I can't be here physically, I do wanna make sure that you all know that I will be here, uh, in one of those cameras. Um, it is, as we've mentioned several times, a really big week ahead. Please be patient with both, um, not only just the time it might take you to get across town, but with our public service employees and with the local service industry staff. Uh, I have already heard a rumor on social media that Kroger staff members have said, "Please don't be mean to us if we're out of things." Um, so I will add to that and say, "Yeah, please don't be mean to people if they're out of things." It's a lot of people for us to have in town, so a once-in-a-lifetime event doesn't come out, come without a couple once-in-a-lifetime pains in the butt, but it will be so worth it, and it's gonna be amazing. Uh, speaking of the space race, there's still time to register. We have almost 150 registrations. It is a 5K-10K that you can run or walk. Uh, it will start at 9:00 AM at Leonard Howell Park, and then we will have an after-party available for you with a couple food trucks and some fun games. Um, I've heard that we will probably even have a special guest from the Galactic Wars that you may have heard of, from the George Lucas franchise, who will be handing out some medals for you. Um, we're also still looking for volunteers, particularly our sustainability team, so, um, you can contact Rena Murphy for that. And then lastly, because the event will have already happened by the time next week rolls around, and I won't be here to say thank you, um, the space race was this, I don't, maybe good idea, it remains to be seen, that I had, that I took to city staff and said, "Hi, I'd really like to do this." Um, so a huge, 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 I couldn't have done this without this list of people, um, to Seth Kropenbaker and his Economic Development intern, Marjorie Brown, Dr. Chelsea Myers with the Sports Leadership and Management Program at Miami, Casey Woodell, Ashley Keaton, Heather Barber, uh, Kim Daggy, along with Sally and Marina from Enjoy Oxford, Jessica, Chief Jones, Chief DeThridge, um, and then Doug and the rest of city staff. Uh, I don't wanna talk too much more about it, 'cause I'll get really emotional, but like, your support to this bananas idea that I had to do this race on the busiest weekend we've ever had in our lives means a lot, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
It's a great idea.
Thanks.
And is it gonna be R2D2?
Maybe. No.
No?
Better. Better.
Okay.
It's Chewbacca then, right? I just wanna give an update that I was so thankful that Bill allowed me to be the representative for Oxford at the Butler County Health Department Annual Meeting, um, and they are doing some really cool stuff. I mean, some of the highlights, I'll touch on two. One of them, when you review the infectious diseases and the reported cases, their hepatitis numbers from 2019, they were in the 400s. I'll just talk about hepatitis A. 400 new cases that year. And then 2020 went down to like 19. It's like, what the heck did you do here? This is so impressive. And they said, "Well, we, we did prevention, right? We went out and we made sure vaccines are readily available, we educated people, and then we also did the harm reduction." You know, we've had people come in and talk about what is going on with the harm reduction as far as making sure there's safe needle exchange, and it's just a really impressive thing that, when you first look at it, you think it, "Oh, gosh, that sounds really unsavory," but then you realize what it's actually doing, and you see the numbers, and you see that their, their programs are working. And just as a, um, a comparison, a person with hepatitis A, when people are like, "Why are we spending money on this?" Like, who cares? If a person with hepatitis A had to, when they get diagnosed and they need treatment, the cost to Medicaid is $1 to $4.4 million. So, when we think about these, like, vaccination and harm reduction programs, that saves so much money, and, you know, uh, what is it? An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure? The other thing that was, is super amazing that they're doing, and their numbers show how effective it is, is that, um, they have a grant program, which is key to this program. They have a grant program, um, for reducing infant mortality in African-American babies, so trying to keep them alive for the first 12 months of their life. They were able to, hopefully I'm remembering these numbers correctly, it was eight per thousand babies, that, that was the African-American infant mortality rate. That's really high. You, uh, the ideal goal is like less than five or so, like around five, which still sounds like too much. Um, and in comparison, the, um, Caucasian infant mortality is about 5.7. So through this program that they've had for almost about two years, they were able to reduce that. I've seen varying numbers of what that is, but it seems comparable to where the Caucasian infant mortality is. So, these programs are so effective, and they are only funded by a grant, so that's why it's tied to one ethnicity. So, it is something that, if we just, it can invest in these programs, we see this real difference. And in case you're wondering, I looked up, I was like, "What is the best, uh, infant mortality in the world?" I believe it was Finland, I feel like it always is around there, and it was about, or Sweden or somewhere. Um, it was like two, it's two, uh, per thousand live births. Um, and I thought, in Ohio, what is the lowest? There actually is a county that is 2.2 per thousand live births, in Guaga County. So we can do it. We can do it here, and we should be doing it. So, there's, there's so many things that we need to look at that make sense to invest in, that would save so much money if we just invest in the front end.
Thank you. Amber?
Just excited for this weekend, and also wanna thank the members of the public who come to speak to us, um, let us know their concerns. We don't always end up voting exactly the way that you might want, but, um, we do listen, and sometimes amendments are made, and so I wanna thank you for coming out. And for those who came to talk about the, uh, police report, please do come back in two weeks, uh, we will have that public discussion, and representatives from the law firm will be here at that time.
Thank you. Jason?
Call again for a ceasefire in Gaza and aid be able to access, uh, the starving people there.
Thank you.
So, again, uh, expressed thanks for everyone who's been involved in organizing all the events that are happening this weekend and policing them and, and dealing with everything. Uh, it's, it takes a lot to put on one event, much less five events. Um, I, I, I do feel bad that people came out to hear the report and didn't have a chance to hear the presentation. I'm hoping the benefit is, is that the report, if you didn't know it already, is attached to the agenda, so one can read and digest, there's a lot in the report to think about and pay attention to, and so I think it may mean that the conversation and the discussion in two weeks is more informed than it would with having three days of reading it. And I'm also thinking, Chief, I mean, y- y- you, you're already thinking ahead towards ways of improving how we handle things. Are you gonna be able to talk about that next, 'cause that's like moving forward?
I mean, I have prepared comments.
Okay.
As I did in executive session, but that wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, but I, yeah, I guess the, the point is, is that that report is trying to make sense of what happened on over, uh... of what happened on over the 18th. It's the next stage, is what do we do with information like that to improve things in the future? And so I think that will afford us a little bit more time for people to process, but also I look forward, I'm sure the public will look forward to hearing what you have to say, so, okay.
Thanks, Dave. I share my colleague's anticipation for the eclipse. If you haven't ever been through one, it's a totally unique once-in-a-lifetime thing, and I encourage you to make plans for it, but to be patient. If I were living in Cincinnati, which isn't going to get the eclipse at a totality, I'd probably go to Oxford, too. So I think there could be a lot of people here. A lot of it depends, of course, on the weather. And so, starting several days ago, I started checking the long-range weather forecast. And the first time I checked, it said rain and cloud. And the next day, it was cloudy, and the next day, it was partly sunny, and then it was cloudy again, and today, it's full sun. Depending on the weather, the crowd could measurably be different, but I anticipate that it will be great fun, even if it's a cloudy day, and it will be something that you will probably tell people about for many years to come. And I hope that we all just are patient and decide to have fun with it, and I think that's the best attitude to take. A couple of other things I wanted to announce. One is that the NAACP Scholarship Dinner is coming up. This is a community-wide event that I know many of us have been to several times in, in the past, and I've been going to it for 20, 30 years. This is a great event. I hope that people will take the opportunity to go. It's a really nice dinner, great fellowship, there's a good speaker, and you help provide scholarships for kids at Talawanda so that they can go on and develop their future plans. And this is on April 19th. It's taking place at the Shriver Center at Miami University at seven o'clock? Five o'clock? Okay, something else was seven o'clock, and it threw me for a loop when they said that. It's five o'clock. So please make your plans and, and attend this, and you can get tickets in advance or you can buy them at the door, but try and get them in advance so they know how many to plan for. The second thing related, the other big community event, and there's a video online that you can click on, this really was well done by the I-L-R folks, and you should see that video, and it will tell you, if you haven't been to Pancake Day, what you're missing. And it's an awesome event, and it is on April 20th. So we got 19th, the dinner, then breakfast in the morning. So you got two meals in a row taken care of, and you're helping your community, so please pay attention to those and buy tickets if you can in advance. Thank you very much, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, thank you.